Emily, you have your.
Yep, just to let everybody who's on the call know that this is being recorded and will be posted on the town's webpage. If you are not speaking, if you can keep yourself muted, that would be appreciated. Thanks.
Okay, we had no work session. Do we have any Nick coming forward?
Yep, we have one work session for Kravik Drive, the mixed-use project.
Okay, I'll look forward to that. And minutes.
Sending us new materials?
Yes, they will be sending new material.
Great. Nick, make sure they send those as expeditiously as possible.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes as written that you all received copies of that have been edited.
I'll move.
Okay, that was you Doug?
Nathan.
Nathan, okay, you're not pictured, so I can't see your lips moving. Second?
I mean, I'm not pictured.
I'll second. Steve?
Steve, all in favor, just signify with your name.
Doug, I. Nathan, I.
Peter, I. Okay, unanimous. Mike, I don't know who wants to, we've been talking about this. We have some site plan issues and small, relatively small, but important. Who's gonna take this? Is Ed or are you gonna take these questions?
Let's see, well, I guess both of them. Ed will take the, maybe the layout ones there. He's actually the one that put it together. So I'm more than happy to back up and add whatever I can.
Okay, is that on?
I'm on the phone. I couldn't log on. I'm having internet issues.
Okay. Ed, do you want to talk? We talked this afternoon, I didn't talk with you, but on some of the the issues relating to the parking, I'm gonna take them in order of the parking lines not meeting code, the striping.
Yeah, we'll update the parking lines so they're 19 feet long or whatever the standard is. But that's not a problem. We have more than enough room to make the parking stalls comply.
Okay, and on the three spots that you removed near the ingress, do you want to comment on those?
Yes. Comments on them? Yeah, we removed them and we added landscape, or we added lawn and tree in that location.
Okay. On the landscaping, Stephanie had a couple of issues, maybe more than a couple, but you want to articulate the landscaping issues? Ed had said that he'll modify them based on your your review.
Yeah, we can update the planting. I know we have to add evergreen trees in front of the gas equipment.
Keep going Steph, you got, we talked this afternoon, you enlightened the rest of the board on the other issues you had on landscaping.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, so yeah, the screening of the utility meters was one area that I wanted to review closely. The material that's proposed there is it's a dwarf deciduous shrub, so we'll definitely need to see something evergreen. And it's a little bit higher, the architectural elevations show those utilities being mounted at about waist height or higher. So there's not a whole lot of room there to put something in, so you want to make sure whatever is, that goes in is efficient and effective. I also noted on the.
If I can interrupt on this, and I hear what you're saying, is it possible on this resolution today to say what the areas and the areas where it's needed and what they would be? One or two choices?
So it's the utility screening on the south facade.
Okay.
And what's recommended there Stephanie?
Evergreen shrubs that are a minimum of mature height of five feet. I think that would be effective.
Okay. Thank you. What else?
So we had requested that the mature trees that are, I'm sorry, the street trees that are shown along Eggway Drive there be pushed out of the utility area. I know that there's a lot that looks like it's happening underground. The one that concerns me most is that those trees are shown just a few feet away from a gas line. And it really begs the question, is that an appropriate spot for street trees to be located at all? I'm thinking that they should probably be like 20 feet away, but I don't think we're gonna have that opportunity if this drive is staying in. So it's really a question for the board members, what would be satisfactory here? Do we leave this out? Is there an area that we could recoup those trees? In general, we like to see like a ratio being met, one tree per 35 feet of street frontage. And we've allowed people to cluster them in the past if they can't be spaced out in a row. And I guess I'm just looking for board feedback to see what's appropriate there and if there is a better opportunity elsewhere.
Is it possible to put them in the greenway just to the north of the parking area? I mean, I agree with you, as soon as they need to do any sort of service on that gas line, those trees are gone. You know, could you put them there, maybe cluster a couple in the corner?
Well, it's overhead wires on the north property line.
Yeah.
I think there's room, I mean, on the north side, I mean, I don't want to be changing anything on the plan, but I gotta tell you, you know, it'd be easier, I think, to put them up there. And I think for future growth, they've got a future there versus the, you know, the strip between Eggway and the building.
Mike, as well, this is something that we can put in the resolution and it can be resolved with input from both the staff and the planning board. I don't want to decide it now. I think it's something that we need to look at closely and I just want to get your concurrence. And we do often cluster and almost prefer it in certain situations. So the same number of trees, as Stephanie pointed out, this might be a little different locations.
And you've got an opportunity on the northeast corner, since we've taken parking lot and have more green space to get a couple in there. So there are other opportunities.
Okay.
Yeah, similarly to the streetscape plantings, the foundation plantings, we also requested that something different go in there. We had recommended like a mix of grasses or something that could take a little bit more of a beating. And really, the intention behind that was also to offer a little bit more interest. What's shown along that facade that Emily has highlighted is it's almost a ground cover of juniper. It gets, it's very uniform and very low. I don't really know that it satisfies like what the intention is of having a foundation planting. If you were to mix it up a little bit, I think that would go a long way in meeting the intent there.
Again, if, because it would be great if we could be specific and the board could agree. So the foundation planting needs to be modified to do what?
Sounds like show more interest in Stephanie's opinion.
Yeah.
A little more natural.
Variety.
Yeah, variety.
To show variety.
Variety and height. You know, something that is, it's not just monotonous, similar plantings all the way around the building.
Like a ground cover, like what she alluded to.
Okay, got it, I think. When I say it out loud, you can tell me if I got it right.
Yeah. Stephanie, do you have other? Does that cover your landscaping?
It does. There is one detail that needs to be modified as well. The transflation detail showed, has a general note, just speaking to thinning the tree branch material. I don't think that that is appropriate for all tree material that will go in. I think if you were doing maples, it would be appropriate. But as far as crab apples and the other trees that you have, I think you're gonna have to probably specify a different tree altogether if you're looking at joint plantings on the north side of the lot. Instead, it should read prune out broken branches and anything that's crossed, but just not a uniform pruning out of branches.
Prune out broken branches, and what was the second thing you said?
Anything damaged or branches that are crossing. Right, thank you Emily.
So is anything gonna go on that strip of land between Eggway Drive and the building?
I don't think, not with the fact that we're trying to relocate those trees.
Or consulting.
Yeah, I don't think that there'd be an issue with any shrub plantings going in. I don't think that that will cause any real issues for the utility lines. The ones that are closer to the property line there are, they're labeled as unknown utility. So yeah, the drainage and the water out in the road. So those are the big ones that you'd want to avoid.
Okay. Is that all right? Mike, can I add to get some shrubbery in there?
Like a clustering, I know like the top tree on, or the left, which would be to the west there, the top tree there, there's like a mound that was there from a previous planting, I suspect. So if we did some kind of clusters, so I still have grass, I kind of like the grass in and out of maybe a cluster or two. I don't want to cover it. I'm just not seeing that look, but I can see a cluster or two.
Is that Stephanie and the rest of the board, do you want to, is that acceptable?
Yeah, I defer to the board for that one.
Okay.
And not round, you know, like kind of free-form shapes, so that they're.
You want to give us some species there Stephanie or Mike?
Give me a spot and a species.
Yeah.
Say maybe in the location of the north tree and the south tree, you know, in terms of
Yeah.
Something that frames the building a little bit?
Maybe Ed, and I can come up with something and get it back to the board.
Yeah, because that's, some of this is gonna have to be, yes, we'll have to, can do some of it administratively, some I'll bring right back to the board to make sure that they're in sync. Next is.
Did we address the plantings underneath the overhang? How the plant.
We just did. We were talking about, go ahead, why don't you repeat Stephanie what we talked about?
So I thought we were just talking about variety and, you know, making those a little bit more non-monotonous, but I guess as long as we discussed and were aware that those species will be able to survive underneath an overhang where they're not getting sufficient water and.
Is that the same as the foundation plantings?
Yes, that's right. And yeah, like grasses would be able to tolerate those conditions there Nathan. And it would also achieve like a lot more variety underneath that area. I mean, and I'm especially sensitive to that since those trees are gonna be going away and there's really nothing to break up the facade. I don't know that having a uniform hedgerow that's very low is gonna do any favors for that facade. So it's pretty visible.
You know, I mean, I know plants at my house, when I have them on the porch underneath the overhang, they don't survive that well, so. But.
Okay, well, we'll get we will get a look at that, at those plantings and it meets the astroturf, so we're a couple steps ahead. Have we covered everything in the resolutions?
Um. What was, what the snow accumulation?
Oh yeah, the metal, we had some concern about snow potentially going, show that area where the metal.
Oh, with the metal, okay. Architecture open. Oh boy. So this kind of area.
Ed, do you have a plan for dealing with snow or Mike?
I think there was a wall section there too, wasn't there?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, let me grab that. I didn't have that drawing set open.
Are you talking about where the siding comes down and meets the ground?
Yes, and there's about eight inches clear between the bottom of those metal panels and the ground plane.
Currently on the building, if you look at one of the pictures, it's actually pink, but there is a metal flashing that runs on the perimeter. That's, I can't say it's eight, it's at least six. And it goes down below grade to cover insulation and slab. And then they bring the drive it material down so it stops short of the ground. So is that what you're asking? So like if there's a clear area?
Yeah, but we were worried about it coming back, the snowbanks coming back up if it's not plowed.
I get what you're saying, yeah, there is a, you know, a rim there, but we were gonna tear it out because it wasn't done properly, so. By eight inches, yeah, I mean, I think it's up, you know, in that range. I've never measured it.
Well, I trust the architects to weigh in if they think this is a problem or how it should be resolved.
Well, is the concern that snow is gonna get trapped in that void and then what? Not?
My understanding, it just went and potentially.
Just stay there?
Yeah, I don't know. Just, this was brought up by the consultants. I'm reiterating.
Right, just where the metal plane has, I'm sorry, where the metal panels have met the ground plane in the past has been an issue of concern just because the salt damage can erode that. So if it's being piled up just by a snowplow who's making that turn going around the building, I would look at that as being a pretty heavy point of contact and could introduce some problems. If the architects on the board don't feel that that's an issue, then.
I think that the, I think that elevating it above the slab is the right move for long-term so that it doesn't rust out. So I don't have any issue with that. I'm struggling to see how, from a maintenance point of view, it's that big a deal. That's why I was looking.
I mean, most manufacturers recommend something like six to eight inches above grade anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, yeah. It's set up for that currently, so, I mean, it is in place. Right now, there's a lot of dirt and other material that was pushed up against it. So I think if you look at the building, the majority of it has that clearance. It's just that there's a lot of areas where whatever landscaping that was there previously, it was pushed up against and covered that gap. So that'll all be pulled away, removed and, you know, I've got to put new curbing in. So that's gonna have new dirt put in, so that whole thing really will be addressed professionally. And, I mean, I'm not gonna put the money into the building and not have it last.
I know, we just have to touch.
You want it shown.
Cross our T's.
You want it shown on the drawing, but.
Okay, and then the one, the last one is that the lighting that is.
Are we, we're okay with that every architects?
I heard him say yes.
Okay, and can I just ask, I see, do I see Kathy's initials? Kathy, are you on?
I'm on.
Thank you Kathy, and is Joe on?
I am on, I am on.
Thank you.
Okay, and Leif, is Leif on? All right, so the last issue I have is the lighting and I think that it makes sense to remove that. There evidently the fixtures that are on the building currently are not in code compliance. Are you planning any other fixtures, Mike, besides those?
There's, for the sign, there were two downlight fixtures to light up the sign.
This goes back.
And all the other ones that we put on there are down, they're non-sky polluting. As a matter of fact, I have them on my house and I can see the stars at night when I'm out in front of my house.
Hence the dark sky compliant. Well, the ones on the building though, that we're gonna take, remove that just that all the lighting have to conform.
Peter, it's all new lighting. We're doing all new lighting, they're all light, wall packs and they're night sky compliant.
Okay, well, we'll need all that detail if you haven't given it to us.
And I did just want to mention that the light, I'm sorry, the wall-mounted lighting fixtures that are shown above the sign, I do not believe that those are co-compliant because they extend out from the building and then are like, sort of like projecting back towards it. So we'll have to look at that a little bit closer and then that should be approved as part of the overall lighting package.
So are we saying right now that we're not going to approve any lighting, that we need to look at the whole package?
Correct.
Okay, but applicant is saying it's pretty much there, we just have to finalize it?
We need to keep it segregated and.
Segregate it.
Okay.
Isn't it on the plan there Ed? Haven't we shown all that?
It's on the plan and we sent the photometrics to Nick earlier today.
All right, well, we haven't had a chance to review it, but I don't want to approve it tonight without full, full review.
Stephanie, does, does that mean that our code does not allow projecting lighting of any kind?
Same question, yeah.
Projecting, so in other words, I light the sign from behind?
No, 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 I'm asking, I'm asking Stephanie, the type of light fixture that's shown right there, detail 22 is not permitted in our code?
That's correct. So just because it has that arm, I mean, I, I feel like it's been put through in either way, like it's considered decorative lighting, so not necessarily part of the overall lighting scheme. But I'm gonna have to go back and review the code very closely to see. And certainly we need the bulb information on this to be able to tell how bright it is. If it is something that's over, I think it's 1800 lumens, needs to be incorporated into the full photometric plan.
So it would be fair in this resolution to say no lighting is approved as part of this plan?
Yeah, yes.
But what is it that we want of the applicant?
We want the applicant, we'll, we need to review and have all full photometrics and cut sheets on every lighting fixture that's proposed in the project.
We can get that to you by Monday.
It must be code compliant.
Okay.
I think that's all I have. Does anybody have anything else?
Sorry, I was noticing on this, on that sign detail, I'm sure this is just a relic from an earlier edition of this, this plan. It does say that this is like to be determined signage on there. Emily, if you zoom into that upper right-hand corner.
That is a relic from, we were originally looking at not doing the sign now, but we decided to push it forward. So that is a relic.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
By it being a relic, what do we need, what do we need on the sign then? Are we approving this sign? Or are we sending it to an administrative approval, or are we saying no signs are approved?
I don't know if it's, have you looked at it Stephanie, is it code?
Yeah, the sign is definitely co-compatible. I think that the board could probably discuss the placement on the building if it's appropriate, especially with the new sign address below that.
So the signage itself is not illuminated?
Correct.
So it relies on these other fixtures, which we say are questionable.
Yeah, that's correct.
But that NYLD and the 6606 is compliant?
The NYLD is definitely compliant within the confines of the box that's shown on the plan. The 6606, it's an address. I don't know that that is subject to the sign code. It's not subject to the sign code, but I've never seen letters or numbers that are outside of the code that are that large, so.
Oh, so we're saying, what you're saying is it's not just numbers, it's acting like a sign? Is that what you're saying? No?
No. I guess I'm just pointing out that it, they're very tall. Yeah, they're quite large.
Yeah.
But it's allowed? It's an allowable?
It's the address. They are allowed to display their address how they'd like to. I think in the design guidelines, it recommends having it on a monument sign, four inches height.
I know that the fire code has minimum sizes too.
Mike, is this something that you're not proposing a monument sign? Is this something you want to look at more closely when we get a whole, the lights? You know, fixtures that are allowed?
Yeah, putting the number on the, oh, go ahead, Mike.
Oh no, I'm a little confused. I mean, really, you're having an objection with the numbers? I mean, I don't really care if they're smaller.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I don't, I'm not proposing that. I'm just talking about the lighting relative to the size. The lighting that you had proposed may or may not be code and the sign is kind of, I want to, I don't know which is contiguous to both, whether the lighting and they go together or they, they don't go together. The sign itself.
No, the lighting does not. I mean, I, it was suggested to me, the two lights up there to light it up and light down. We could have something that mounts directly and flush on the wall that probably would be compliant, I would assume. I just thought that those would be, would light better, but I could do the same downlighting, a smaller size and probably accomplish the same thing.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend looking in that direction, Mike, and that way you could probably avoid having like two hotspots on the sign. I'm not really sure, because there wasn't any lighting information supplied, whether there would be like a really uniform cast across the entire sign fixture. So you definitely want.
We can approve the sign, but the lighting will be separate.
So the sign is part of the plan, so it'll be approved unless we eliminate it?
Yeah, if I could get the sign approved, that'd be great, and then I'll work the lighting and I'm sure the lighting, we can have different diffusers so we can get the lighting spread evenly.
Okay. You want to make a, read the resolution, Jamie?
Sure. Sure. So this would be a motion to approve the plans that's submitted with the following conditions, items to be corrected on the plans. All lighting to be, is to be modified so that it is compliant with the lighting code of the town of DeWitt. Any lighting on the plans currently is not approved. The plan is to be revised to provide for striping for parking spaces that meet the dimensional requirements of the code. The currently shown striping does not meet code. The landscape plan on the current plan needs to be revised as follows. The utility screening on the south facade replaced with evergreen shrubs with mature height of five feet. The street trees are to be moved out of the utility area and moved to a cluster at the northeast corner and other opportunities to be determined. The foundation planting is to be modified to show a variety of species in height currents, not just current ground cover that is shown. The tree detail should be changed to quote prune out broken branches and anything damaged or branches crossing. In location of the north. Wait, I'm sorry, if I, there's a location of the north and south tree replaced with, and I stopped that. Does someone have language?
Shrub masses to be reviewed.
Thank you.
Masses and clustering.
Okay. The plans must be modified as set forth here in no later than, and I, I have a proposed date of October 21. Is that agreeable with the board? It's a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. And resubmitted to the town department of planning and zoning. Upon proof of compliance with these conditions, the plans may be signed by the planning board chairperson as final site plan approval. Upon the signing of the plans as set forth here in, this approval is for these plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson and the applicant and requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to Town of DeWitt Code, Section 192-122.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'll second.
I'll second. Doug, all in favor?
Hi.
I.
Nathan, I.
Doug, I.
Peter, I.
Kathy, I.
Kevin, I.
Steve, you're thinking?
Steve?
Oh, I'm opposed.
Oh yeah, okay, so it carries. with one opposed. Uh, thank you, and thanks for the patience. It's a little bit of a work session, but we can take advantage of all the good weather possible for Mike and Ed.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I appreciate that. We'll get the revisions right back to you.
Thank you. Move to the warehouse? Do we have the applicant? And who?
At the, this is Rob Seeley from EDR. I'm here on behalf of Don DeStefano, who I believe is also online. He's the applicant, and Joanne, I believe, Galiano is also online from EDR.
And for the board, this is being reviewed by O'Brien Gear to avoid any conflict of interest. Who's going to take the lead from?
I can, I can run you through it. So as you probably know, this is a continuation of the Bureau Warehouse Development that was originally approved in two thousand and six. And the original site plan consisted of three buildings, so this is the third of three buildings, so it's the, the final piece of the puzzle here. So you can see the existing two buildings on the left, and then phase three building is the big white space, yep, right there. You can jump to the next one. There you go. So this is a blow up of just that phase three area. Building one is just to the left there. So building two is basically a mirror image of building one. It's thirty thousand square feet. There you go. Along the front edge of the building, you can see there are eighty-one new parking spaces that also wraps down around the side. And then in the back of the building, that, that darker gray tone, that's just a heavier duty asphalt pavement for, for the trucking area. Back, along the front of the building, we have granite curbing and concrete sidewalks. Again, that, you know, match building one, so we're continuing that design treatment across the site. There's three, three new light poles across the front of the building that will match the original lighting as, as close as possible. They told me that they're, they're pretty close. We're, we're still investigating the lighting and should have that information tomorrow or Monday. Off to the right on the screen, you'll see that the dashed in reserve parking that we had demonstrated at the time of the original approval, so there's eighty-one spaces proposed to be constructed and fifty potential future reserved spaces. Down in the back, you'll see the relocated chain link fence. That's a sixty by sixty storage area. That's currently in the footprint of where building two will go. So that's being relocated to the south edge of the site. And I don't know if you want to jump to the landscape plan? Where the utilities, probably utilities is next. Hey, you can stop there, Charlie, you can do utilities. Zoom in right on that corner. So the utilities come in between the two buildings. You pan up to the upper left. There you go. So you can see the, the force, excuse me, the water line coming in, there's an eight-inch line that comes in and goes into the west end of the building, and then the sanitary connection there as well. So in the original project, the, the water and sanitary was brought to, to that location right at the end of building one. So no building two, we'll just take those services and connect them in. And same with the electric. For the storm, you can see we're picking up the roof leaders along the back of the building, and we're tying those into the existing storm system that was installed in phase one. And then it's similar on the north side of the building. We're installing new catch basins in the pavement, and then those connect into the existing system over to the left, yep, right there. Okay, let's jump to the planting plan. So again, just carrying the same treatment we had in the original project, so street trees along the front and then foundation plantings along the front of the building. We've got some plantings in between the buildings to just screen views towards the, the trucking area in the back. Island, and then a couple of trees down along the side of the building, just to break up that facade. The building itself, again, will be pretty much a mirror image of, of the first building, same materials, same dimensions, same height.
Do they have elevations?
Yes, we do. Signage is very similar.
Is the idea that there'll be three tenants or six tenants? There's six sets of doors into this facility?
Yeah, Don, you can jump in if you'd like. I, I, I believe the, the building is, is, is a flexible space that could be divided up as six tenants.
Yeah. Parking based on, is parking based on office occupancy or warehouse?
Uh, it's a blended mix. There's a table on, on the layout plan.
Well, isn't the problem we have with these buildings is that they always end up becoming more office than warehouse? Anybody else want to join in?
Well, is that, is that why they're proposing reserve parking there as well into the calculations?
And they all have loading docks in the back, so I wouldn't say there's office space. I think everything that's presently used there is is, has goods that are shipped or something, right?
Yeah, I mean, the existing, the existing buildings now, correct, they all have loading docks and loading areas, so that's the intent, right, Don? For this building as well, with front end sales or service?
Yes, the, just to go back, the building can be broke, the way we designed it, it could be broken down into six, five thousand square foot locate, you know, spaces, but the first thirty thousand square foot building has two tenants pretty much equally about fifteen thousand square feet each, and typically because of the height of the warehouse area, it's a very suitable for warehouse and distribution, so the four, the four tenants that we have, we, we have two tenants in the fifteen thousand square foot building, and we have two tenants in the thirty thousand square foot building, and typically they're running about twenty-five percent office space. And they all utilize the high ceilings for warehouse and distribution. So based on the four tenants we have, we're, we really aren't using a lot of parking spaces currently for the existing tenants.
You have extra in case you do have more office space in the reserve, will that accommodate additional office staff? And if that ratio were to change?
Well, we have the one area that's, I think, what did you say, Rob? There's how many spaces there that are reserved?
There's fifty reserved, reserved spaces now in that dashed area.
That equates to what percentage of the overall?
Uh, the overall, right now, there's a hundred and two spaces. We're proposing another eighty-one.
Can you go back to the parking tabulation form? So if I'm reading this correctly, we're talking about building two, the bottom two rows, which is depicted as kind of a duplication of what is in building one, number of employees for sales, office, and warehouse showing two tenants and a required number of parking spaces. In that tabulation, where is the reserve parking? Let's see.
That says less than twenty-five percent reserve.
Yeah, so in the, the far right column.
Right.
So you're required thirty-five for suite one, but you're providing twenty-six. You're required fifty-four for suite two, you're providing forty-one.
Right.
Correct.
We're, we're, we're actually higher than that, so sixty-seven would be what would be required. We're, we're providing, we're gonna proposing to construct eighty-one. So we're, we're somewhere in between the minimum and, and the, and the code requirement.
So with, no, maybe there it is. I think you have fifty percent lock coverage, fifty percent building coverage. Oh, ordinance, gotcha.
Yeah, what is the total lot coverage? That's, I don't understand that. Your building coverage is fifty, yet your block coverage is also fifty?
That's what I, but that's the ordinance, so that, that threw me at first too, but we're, if you look to the column to the right, Steve, it says they're proposed, so they're proposing twenty-four percent lock coverage and twelve percent of that lot is building, so twelve percent.
Was the total thirty-six then?
I think it's twenty-four. So twelve percent. Yeah. Robert, were we reading that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So if we go back to the site plan for a second, I got a, a question about just kind of the, the layout. We've been talking about parking a little bit, but it appears in the bottom right, just to the right of the relocated chain link fence. It looks like you're actually connecting through to the adjacent parking lot. Is there a particular reason why you're doing that, and do you have a cross-ass, cross-axis easement? I mean, some reason to use their lot?
No, the, the intent of that in the original design was to allow tractor trailers room to back in and out of the, if you had, if you had an overhead door at the far right bay, you, you could have more, it gives you more maneuvering space to get in and out of that, that door.
But I guess, are you allowed to drive over the property and use the adjacent tenant's property to maneuver your trucks?
Um, no, there's no, there's no easement in place, no. The, the intent was just to be able to get as close to the property line as you can with the maneuvering space.
So you're just paving right up to the, and so then that might follow a question of that.
Yeah, it's paved today. It's all paved today up to the property line, so.
Yeah, we were also looking about extending that kind of green, you know, green space. You know, the buffer between the two properties, you know, so that it's continuous all the way through. You know, just for a clear delineation, you know, not eating as much kind of hardscape in there, hard surface. The other was, I was gonna ask about the, the maneuverability around that relocated chain link fence. If you have overhead doors there, you know, that corner seems to be kind of poking right up close to the, to the buildings and how trucks and people are gonna maneuver around that corner without smacking into it and destroying it.
Yeah, so the current proposal, if you look at the elevations, is there's, there's no overhead doors shown, so the intent is, again, these being flexible space buildings, if they had a tenant that needed an overhead door, they could put that in, and in that case, obviously, the, you know, they'd have to get rid of the fence to, to allow the access to that, that door.
So if you're, if you're calling a bunch of storage, you know, and warehouse, how are you moving goods in and out of the building if there's no overhead loading dock or access into the building?
Don, is there a, is there a door that's going to be proposed? Because it wasn't shown on?
Right now, we're currently negotiating, we don't have a site lease, but we're in the final phases of it for twenty-five thousand square feet of the, of this thirty thousand square foot building to be occupied by a single tenant with three thousand square feet of office space. And there are requirements like four dock doors, and so the capability, based on our design criteria, allows for more than that. And so I, I think we can accommodate that tenant, which would take up you know, eighty percent of the building, seventy-five percent of the building, and then there would just be a one five thousand square foot tenant or one potential occupant, occupancy for one additional five thousand square foot tenant. So if that scenario, and I mean, every scenario is different, but if that scenario follows through, then we won't be using as many doors as we potentially have factored in.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm circling back to Steve's point earlier that, you know, if there are no, no doors up there, you know, can we really consider these things warehouses? You know, you gotta, you gotta pair of man doors on the front, is that really? Is that how you're moving your, your goods, you're storing in a warehouse in and out?
No, we have eight by eight dock doors where a tractor, a truck would, you know, with a four-foot elevation off the ground level. So a truck would, you know, back into that eight by eight opening in the wall.
Can you pull up that elevation?
Yeah, see, I don't see any doors shown there.
Yeah. Well, the way we did it, we put lintels in the block wall that show that, there's like two, I think the way we had it in the other one, there was two dock doors for every five thousand square feet. So we could have I mean, we could actually fit more, but to do it in a balanced way, typically two dock doors, they could also be ramped where you could drive in and the door would be a little bigger. Typically, two openings plus a man door fits in the five thousand to fifty feet comfortably without any kind of crowding. Honestly, I don't know why they're not shown on the back of this wall. I would have to talk to Zausmer Frisch about that because this makes us look, I don't know what this makes it look like. It looks like there's one man door, no dock doors or.
Well, that's gonna be my follow-up question, is that you have, you have one secondary means of egress. If, if you were to divide off that first suite and have that one man door there, all of your other suites only have a single point of access through the front of the building?
Yeah, that's why this is very misleading, because their one man door is the utility door for the utility room. And the only thing I can think of is why the architect that put it in there is because this is originally designed under spec, you know, in, with speculation, and it's, so it's not one hundred percent sure exactly where all those doors are gonna go, and.
But I think if you're, if you're showing, if your, if your plan is to put lintels in place so that you have the flexibility to add some doors in the future, should you need them, I think you at, at minimum need to show where the man doors are, and then at least, you know, the location of where. I think you at, at minimum need to show where the mandors are and then at least, you know, the location of where potential doors are that you're planning for. Um, I'd actually also like to see, you know, truck maneuverability in the back, um, especially with that fence being where it is in relation to that. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking if you're between suite or between grid lines, you know, D and C and C and E, those doors there, if you try to back a truck up to those, you've got that fence right in front of you. You're gonna block off that entire drive aisle that's through there, you know, as part of that.
Yeah, I agree. We need some truck movement shown. Could we also talk about the elevations? I can't read what the materials are. Kind of an ill proportioned elevation. Tiny windows and a huge freeze that look, I don't know what it is.
I mean, this is a, a direct copy of the dull tile space, the dull tile building right next to it, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Rob, do you have photos or we can pull up that we might help, um, also help see the back of the building for the existing building, just so that it's better for the discussion and then it can be, or if somebody can pull up like a Google Earth image. Cause I don't, I don't know if we had photos.
We can do that.
Yeah. Cause I think that will help so people can see materials and actually see the doors.
Yeah.
And then that will inform, you know, the discussion for showing what we can.
Cause the elevation as drawn isn't doing you any favors. I can tell you that. Hell yeah.
So that's the front and then you can kind of, might be able to swing around the back or at least the other buildings. We can see how the, they're set up and what the flexibility looks like.
What we tried to do with the design, we have a couple of different textured blocks. We also have the drive-in. And then the, actually, it's like three different blocks, the, the beige block, the dark gray block, the light gray block. They're a little different texture. And then the drive-in also to try to give the buildings a little, a little, um, design.
Who is your architect?
The architect is Zausmer Frisch.
Nathan, did you see the size of the numbers on that building?
Just to comment based on the previous applicant.
Doug, you wanna count block?
Count people.
Yeah.
They're a bit further out the road though.
I think in reference to the garage doors, like, uh, we were talking about the lintels would be in place so we could have, i- if we had to. But as you, if, as, as you can notice with dial tile and Jex Pearl, there's, I think, uh, well, the white trucks in a way, but I think there's, there's the two doors and I think a couple down for the Jex Pearl. And maybe, and, and a drive-in door. I think there's maybe four dock doors, yeah, or five dock doors and one drive-in door. Um, so.
They're definitely not, you know, office type buildings. Now you can see, you know, they're really, uh, set up for this purpose of you know, people coming in and out, distribution, contractor pickup, showroom.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I, I mean, I know the building, I know dull tile, I know the function of the building. So I think we just need to make sure that, you know, what's on there and the function of the building is being accurately represented without any dock doors or anything on there. I mean, those spaces could be just office, um, office spaces. And I think if they're truly warehouse, they need to reflect a warehouse function.
Yeah, I think that was probably their intent, but they don't, you know, since there's not a tenant yet, they'll just have to come up with something that's reasonable. If you were to have the six tenants, I guess, show the worst case scenario, right?
Exactly.
I agree. I, I, it's, uh, an oversight on our part not having anything in the back like that. Um, we can correct that and.
Okay. Any other questions? This is a concept review, so we'll get comments out, but any other.
Stay on the plan for a minute so we can see the paving too.
Yeah, Peter, just, just to follow up, uh, on the two thousand and six approval, was there any discussion on the dumpsters and trash storage?
Hi Doug, I think I can speak to that. Um, both the two thousand and six and two thousand and fifteen approvals for this project in the buildings, the existing buildings show dumpster enclosures. Um, I took a site visit out there and it does not appear that the enclosures were ever implemented. So I think that's something that we would want to see on a detail.
Right. Retroactive to the first phase.
And then going forward.
Well, yeah, I agree with that also. And I, I, uh, can't, really not sure why they weren't put in. But, uh, we would correct that and make sure that was.
Yeah. And Don, you, you did say that you do need a dumpster for this building as well. We just, uh, so we'll have to add to the plan.
Yeah.
Any other questions we'll, uh, from the board?
And there's some nice, uh, groupings of plantings along the road there. I hope that those will all remain.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah.
Lot of utilities around. Um, thank you very much. Uh, we'll get comments out when, Ann, Will or Stephanie?
If you're referring to this project here, we will not be issuing comments on this. Mark Parrish will be.
Mark will. All right. That's correct. Thank you.
Is Mark on? I thought, I thought I saw his, yeah.
Done earlier.
Initials. Okay. Thank you, Mark. So you'll be, um, issuing comments?
Uh, yeah, I guess it, it was touched on, but I mean, um, uh, I believe the site plan design guidelines require a ten-foot buffer area. Or suggest, I guess, since they're guidelines, you know, along the property lines. Are, are we going to extend that green area? Are we gonna leave this as proposed?
I would recommend unless, unless the truck turning really prohibits, I would suggest connecting the two green buffers.
I would, I would as well.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess the other thing I, um, you know, and again, I don't do these portions of the review, but, um, just some things that I see, um, I don't see any bike rack on this, on this site plan, or is that something we would wanna have added in?
Not much sidewalks on that street.
Don, you, there's no, are there any employees at this point that get there other than driving a car? Do they bike there or?
I don't, I think, I think this is for the encouragement of that, not necessarily reality.
I was just wondering if they do.
I'm bringing it up. It's up to the board.
Did we ask Pepsi Cross for two ninety-eight to do that?
I think.
I think we've asked everyone to do it.
I guess everyone.
I think so too.
I think it's a, we, we, we said something we wanna continue to have.
I mean, it looks like there's a bus stop in front of the building. There was a, a, a little concrete.
Yeah, there's definitely room for it. So there's no problem if you want in.
Yeah, I think back in oh six, that wasn't required. So that's why it's not on here, but I, I believe we did do it on building two, on the smaller building, excuse me, building three. So yeah, we can, we can provide that.
Okay.
Actually, I, you're right. It's positively on building three.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Yep. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Um, Peter, could I just say something about?
Yes.
Steve, you're muted.
Last time, I think we were all a little bit overwhelmed and quite frankly disappointed at their submittal. Um,
What, what, what were you referring to? Steve, I'm sorry.
The Kravik Drive, which is coming in for the work session at the next meeting. I, I think we need to send them a message of what we want this to be stylistically. And I'm thinking that it has to be a contemporary building because that is what Erie Boulevard is. And I, I think that needs to be explained to them ahead of time. So they don't come in with, you know, buildings with arch windows and everything else under the sun. They had, you know, Disney World the last time they came in.
You know, there's some buildings over off of, uh, over in Camillus that they just built. Over by the, just down from the high school on route five. If you see what they've done through that corridor. I don't know if anybody's been over that way. Right on route five, uh, just east of the high school, down on the right-hand side, down by Show Park. There's some really nice buildings that get off the road.
Yeah, those are all single-story buildings. I mean, I.
No, I think they're, they're multi-story, cause it, they were under construction last year when I was going out to the ice rink over in Show Park. I haven't seen them yet this year.
There are three stories. Nathan, you ought to go by there because I, they caught my eye.
Where are they Joe? I don't understand where they are.
Stephanie, can you, can you put them up?
Steve, if you're going out, uh, to get to Show of Park out by the ice arena there, and you're going down route five and you make the left to head down, gosh, we're back.
No, so, um, I'm trying to think of the name of the street.
The right crossing with Tony Camilla's, um, um, municipal building.
Yeah, right, Joe.
Yep. But they caught my eye and you know, even, uh, and I, and Peter and I talked about this the other day when I was up at SU. Even, uh, even the, the, uh, SU or the forestry school dormitories. I mean, they have a lot of in and out and re, flat roofs and.
Well, I, I think that, I think that's, that's the thing, Joe, is that they're contemporary buildings, but lots of glass, lots of um, and, and a, a, uh, palette of material, limited design vocabulary. So I think we have to send that, all these thoughts to them. Those are particularly nice. I don't.
Well, no, this is, this is an office building out front. What I'm showing here is they're being, you know, constructed in the back right here. You see the start of construction.
Yeah, they're, they're done now, Nathan.
They're multi-story?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thing I've seen out there is that, um, hotel at, uh, Township Five.
Oh, the true, true hotel.
This is up on, uh, route five.
This is much west of that.
Yeah.
I, I'll drive by. I'm headed out there in the next couple of days. I'll drive by. And if we want to, I can throw up. I did the, uh, the dormitories all up at, uh, the law school and, and the forestry school. I could bring, I could pull some images for that. That shows some of that modulation.
Well, I mean, you know, we already directed them to, uh, early McHenry.
Yep.
Well, there, there are examples out there. I thought we gave them a lot of instructions, uh, and direction before, but it wouldn't.
Well, I don't, I, they went down some historic route. I don't know how they got there, but you know, it, what they came in was Disneyland and we, we can't have that.
Well, I think, um, we have that the language and the overarching principles that we should point out, which is to, um, comply with the architectural vernacular. How's that, Steve? How'd they do?
Right. And that is contemporary architecture, Jamie. So we have to, we have to underscore contemporary architecture. I don't wanna say modern, cause that's, we're in post-modern now or post-post-modern.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, but there's, yeah, that's the law school housing. That was, uh, Ernie McHenry was about, was the design architect.
Yeah, that was, that was, uh, Ernie McHenry and us, Steve.
Yeah.
We did all the detailing.
And if you remember the, the first iteration of that was, was, uh, quite a bit different.
Yep. It went to, it had its life. And then we did with them the, uh, the, um, the forestry school dormitories too. We did all those.
The big, the big change with, with this one was the larger windows and the massing of the window, the group windows. Yeah.
And that was mod, modular, you know, modularly built too.
Yeah, that, that one was, we trucked all that up from Pennsylvania on tr, on tractor trailers. Each, each unit was a module. Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, it could be put up pretty quickly, you know, so.
The best part about that's the entrance court.
All right.
They just have to get curious about design because otherwise it's just a waste of our time.
We'll get the message across.
Who's gonna do that messaging?
That's gonna come from the staff. Nick, are you there?
Stephanie?
Still here. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll work with Jamie and we'll get, we'll run it by.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about architecture. I just told you my whole vocab right there.
We're gonna make an architect of you soon.
Yeah.
Well, I, but I, I think Nick has to say the, the one overarching design principle is that it has to conform with the vernacular architecture, which in this instance is contemporary architecture.
Yeah, and I, I'd be perfectly blunt about the position the board is gonna take because otherwise, you know, this, this, I, I, I heard about this the last time, you know, they come in, they get there, they wiggle their, they weasel their way through planning board on site issues. And then the architecture sort of gets thrown in at the end and it's like, we have to accept it because they're so far down the road. And they gotta realize from day one that this is an architectural solution also.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just think everything they've submitted today is unacceptable and it's, uh, take a rabbit.
We will draft up, Nick, I'm, I'm gonna charge you with, uh, drafting this between, uh, you know, the consultants and then we'll run a draft, uh, by our planning board prior to sending it out.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, it's a late second, Kathy first. Uh, thank you. Have a great, uh, Friday and a great weekend, everybody.